Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our City Council meeting. If I can have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Put your hands over your hearts, repeat after me: I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we are here this evening in our usual format. My fellow council members are teleconferencing in, and I am here with Tracy Noonan, our city attorney, and Drew Powers, our city manager, and we are about eight to 10 feet apart from each other, so we're going to forego the masks this evening and get right down to our meeting. If may I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Mayor Adam?
And I'm here, thank you. All right, now let us go to our COVID update, and I know we have some news this evening that Mr. Powers would like to share.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Adam and residents. Just brief again update this evening, as I know this is probably top of mind for many people if you're tracking the news and following the developments. As I mentioned last week when we were together, that circumstances have changed fairly dramatically, not only in Ventura County but across the state and the nation, and our COVID cases over the last 10-day period have increased dramatically. Increase that is largely driven based on the county's data on gatherings, and some of those small, some of those large, most at-home gatherings. We're coming up to Thanksgiving, there's obvious concern with the holidays around us about the continued transmission of this virus and the potential for really severely impacting local hospitals. So in working with the county and the state of California, you probably have heard, but unfortunately, we have slipped back into the most restrictive purple tier. We're not alone in that, essentially every county in Southern California, if you look at the map across the state, there's now 41 counties, I think, returned to the purple tier. I want to emphasize tonight VenturaCountyRecovers.org is the central repository for information as it has been from the very beginning. There is a portion on that site that has the COVID-19 testing locations, and as I mentioned last week, we're really encouraging, urging people to utilize these free tests. It is the single best way to identify cases if there has been exposure or if you have been around someone that has had the virus. The closest two locations for those of us in Thousand Oaks are at the Newberry Park Branch Library. It's open Monday to Friday, 8 to 8, and you can schedule an appointment by calling or registering online, and that information is up at VenturaCountyRecovers.org. There's also a drive-up testing facility, there's four of them across the county, and the closest one to us is at Moore Park College, and that is open Monday to Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., if you prefer to stay in your vehicle and administer the test and continue on your way. Wait times have fluctuated a bit, but are still, depending on time of the day, relatively quick and easy. Test results generally being delivered within 24 to 48 hours after testing. So really encourage you, please value yourselves of that, of these testing sites. There are a number of other testing locations around. There is a mobile testing facility for those that are businesses or entities that have over 100 folks that you'd like to get tested. You can book them, and that's listed under mobile testing at Ventura County Recovers. So I know we're going to be utilizing that for some of our field crews in the coming week, so it's a service that the county has put together that'll bring a mobile testing team out. Overall, just want to stress the message, and it feels like a broken record, and I apologize for that, but we are in difficult circumstances now as we were in the early days of this pandemic. We're continuing to do everything we can to support our businesses and our residents. In fact, our rental assistance program just concluded yesterday evening, and so we'll be providing some additional information about the outlay of those dollars to support those affected by COVID and having trouble paying their rent. We've done business assistance grants and so on. You'll also be hearing this evening about some additional CARES funding and the allocation of that funding, so doing what we can to support, to help our residents stand up and get through this, but the truth is, we're likely in this purple tier now for the remainder of the calendar year, and that's based on the way the state is handling those metrics and the way the trajectory of the cases is going. So all that said, there does appear to be some light at the end of the tunnel as it relates to vaccine, with promising results being released. Additional study needs to be done on that, but we're beginning to have more and more conversations about what it looks like to think about vaccine deployment to the broader population next year, and working with the county and the lead chair on that. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Well, we've been in this spot before, and we made it through, and I know we can do it again. I'm proud of the way the city stepped up, as Mr. Powers mentioned, with rental assistance to our residents and with assistance to our small businesses to keep them afloat. Testing really is important. I read recently that 50% of the cases have no symptoms at all, you don't even know you have it, and the only way you would know is through testing, and that way you could find out whether you were contagious or not. And with the holidays coming up, you know, we want to see our families, but I think it's important that we perhaps reconsider any travel that we might be taking or how we put together a family gathering. I know Merrill and I were planning on going to Visalia to see Merrill and sister and my brother-in-law and the family up there, and we decided it'd be better just to stay here in Thousand Oaks, so that's what we're going to do with my two daughters and my mother. So it'll be a small gathering, but Thanksgiving is Thanksgiving, and there'll be many more of Thanksgivings, but we need to make sure we combat this thing. You know, the vaccines are in the works, but it's another thing to get vaccinated, and that's going to take time, so in the meantime, we've got to band together and do what's necessary to keep this thing under control, so thank you all for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Engler.
Thank you. Just, I wanted to highlight another aspect of the city that has been working so well. I want to take a nod to our employees from top to bottom who have had to truly change their entire approach to work, but still get the work done, and I just want to show my appreciation that we're still doing our plan checks, we're still doing our community development, we're still doing our work in the finance office. All of those things are continuing under the circumstances that have been trying at best, and they have done a great job.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Engler. Any other comments? All right, let us move on to public comments. Do we have a public comment this evening?
We do not, Mayor.
We do not have any public comments. Well, then we'll go on to the consent calendar. And anything to poll? And if not, may I get a motion to pass the consent calendar, please?
I'm of approval of the consent calendar.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Jones. If we could have a vote, please?
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we have a couple of public hearings tonight, and the first one, we're going to talk about our Community Development Block Grant Program. Lynn Oshida from our Community Development Analyst will be giving us that report. Good evening, Ms. Oshida.
Mayor, if I could go ahead and open the hearing?
Oh, yes, that would be a good idea as well. Yes, thank you.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2019-20 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and we do not have any public speakers.
Thank you. Now we go to Ms. Oshida. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is the annual review of the city's Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG program, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The program year was July 2019 to June 2020. Staff is requesting City Council approval for this report to be submitted to HUD. Last year, there was a little over $1 million available. This included prior year funding and the CDBG grant. The 2019 CAPER does not include the CDBG coronavirus funds, which has a separate reporting requirement from HUD. The CDBG funds were allocated to three areas: included the 2018 and 2019 community projects, public services, and administration. The city expended about $930,000 in CDBG funds with an ending balance of $212,000. The city's primary activity last year was housing rehabilitation. CDBG funds benefited low-income seniors at the area housing authority projects at Glen Oaks and Florence Janes apartments by replacing the elevators. The Many Mansions Richmond Terrace project replaced seven roofs. CDBG funds benefited 27 low-income units, of which 13 units are reserved for homeless and disabled residents. The mobile home rehabilitation activities with Safe and Habitat for Humanity rehabilitated 61 owner-occupied extremely low and very low-income units, expending about $336,000. CDBG expended $86,000 and served about 6,000 low-income Thousand Oaks residents. These residents were served by seven local nonprofit service providers. The administration cost of $110,000 included the preparation of the five-year Regional Consolidated Plan and analysis of impairment to fair housing. This summary shows the city expended over $900,000 in program year 2019 CDBG funds, and a balance of about $200,000 will be carried forward to program year 2020, which started on July 1st. Staff is recommending that the City Council approve the program year 2019 CAPER for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This concludes the slide presentation, and staff is available to respond to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oshida. Questions for staff? All right, hearing none. I just would like to say that these are federal funds that come to us, and they are intended for low-income folks, and that's exactly what this money is being spent on: Senior Alliance for Empowerment, to keep seniors in their mobile homes. They're really a wonderful way to spend the money. Habitat for Humanity, Many Mansions, all great nonprofits that really help our low-income folks, particularly our seniors. So if we have no further discussion or questions, may I get a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve staff recommendation.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Noonan, you had a comment?
No.
Oh, yeah, I closed the public hearing first. Yes, I got to remember, you got to open it, you got to close it. Now we're going to close it, and Mayor Pro Tem Bill De La Peña has a motion on the floor. If we can have a vote, please?
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
And that's a yes for me.
And that motion carries 4-0.
All right. Well, now that I have practice, we have a second public hearing, and I'd like to ask our city clerks to open that one, please.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B regarding second substantial amendment to the 2019-20 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan to incorporate coronavirus trench CDBG CV3 funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and Mayor, we do not have any public speakers.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Oshida, you're going to give us the presentation again.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the city's public hearing on the proposed amendment to the 2019 action plan and use of Community Development Block Grant COVID-19, or CDBG CV funds, from the U.S. Department of Urban Development, or HUD. The city received HUD notification in September regarding a third round of CDBG allocation for approximately $780,000 to be used in response to COVID-19. This funding comes from a portion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act. In order to receive the allocation, the city is required to amend its 2019 CDBG action plan to account for this supplementary funding and submit it to HUD. Staff is recommending that the amendment broadly describe activities related to COVID-19, public services, and administration. As required by HUD, at least 70% of the total CDBG CV funding needs to meet the CDBG low-to-moderate income national objective. Given the need to quickly respond to this opportunity, HUD provider provided greater flexibility to meet public participation requirements, which the City Council approved in May. The draft amendment was posted on the city's website. Notification of public comment period was posted in the Ventura County Star and the Thousand Oaks Acorn. The public comments period was held between November 19th to the 14th. All comments that are received tonight will be included in the final amendment submitted to, the final amendment document, which will be submitted to HUD in November. The draft amendment would support COVID-19-related social service activities, case management, and various non-congregate shelter operations for persons vulnerable to coronavirus. Page four of the staff report includes program requirements to receive such funds. The public service activity needs a clear nexus to prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19 pandemic. The program needs to be ready to receive the use of CDBG CV funds. The agencies would need to have HUD experience and specific coronavirus guidelines, and they must have an active SAM.gov verification. Also, the agencies working with the homeless would need to be a participant of the county of Ventura's Homeless Management Information System, or HMIS. Applications will be open on Thursday, November 19th, and applications will be due before 5:00 p.m. on December 3rd by email only. Application, instructions, and FAQs will be available on the city's website at www.toaks.org/cdd. City staff is recommending council approval on the action plan amendment, which adds the third round of COVID-19-related CDBG funds for public services and administration. Authorize city manager to approve allocations and execute related documents, and finally, to approve the budget appropriation for the federal grant. The CDBG CV funds will be used in response to the pandemic through public services to benefit the vulnerable Thousand Oaks residents. This concludes staff's report. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Oshida. Questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I have an observation. I was very favorably impressed with this analysis. You know, when the federal government first passed that CARES Act, and I thought, $2 trillion? How is that ever going to be equitably dispensed? And reading this report, I mean, even though there are 50 states and several thousand counties and I don't know how many cities in this country, but it seems to me that this is being dispensed in a very logical and, as far as I can tell, fair manner, and I'd like to compliment, well, I guess, starting with the federal government, and the state of California and Ventura County and the local cities here, because I think this is a very equitable formula they're using, and I just hope that the whole $2 trillion can be dispensed in this fashion. So that's my observation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Any other questions? If not, I did want to get a little clarification. These funds will be used over the winter, then, for vouchers? Is that correct, for our homeless folks?
So the city is opening application this Thursday, looking for agencies that serve public services for homeless and those at risk of becoming homeless, and it's for the period from now until June 30th.
Okay. Yeah, that's really important. I think I read $650,000 worth of these funds will go towards helping those folks, and considering the COVID business that we're in right now, churches this winter will not be opening their doors as they have in many winters past, so these funds really are important, and I'm glad that we got our share. Any other questions or thoughts? All right.
I'll move to recommended action, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jones? And I'm going to close the hearing. I got half right. I opened it. Anyway, and we're going to close the hearing, and we do have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Jones. If I have a vote, please?
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have to add, in our community attitude survey, the concern about homelessness has increased exponentially in the city of Thousand Oaks with our residents, so again, to be able to have these funds to address that over the winter, to me, is very important. I'm glad we're able to do that. All right. Next, we have a third public hearing, and I'll ask our city clerk to And I'll ask our city clerk to open that one as well.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8C regarding Cano Valley Groundwater Basin Groundwater Management Plan, MI2104. And we do not have any public speakers.
All right, thank you. And this evening, we have Nader Hadari, our Deputy Public Works Director, to tell us a little bit about some water that we have out at the golf course.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Adam and members of the council. I'm here this evening to present on the adoption of the city's groundwater management plan for the Cano Valley Groundwater Basin. Joining me virtually tonight is Ida Faruzan, our project manager for this project. The city currently relies on 100% imported water through Callejas, and which is delivered from Metropolitan Water District. As we're all aware, the reliability of this imported water is continually being threatened due to increasing environmental regulations in the Sacramento Bay Delta, as well as more frequent and intense dry conditions being experienced statewide. Due to these issues and the corresponding rise in water costs, the city is seeking opportunities to develop a local water supply through the use of groundwater. This will diversify our water supply and better protect ourselves from climate change, as well as potential emergencies. The Cano Valley Groundwater Basin is shown on this exhibit in blue, which underlies the majority of central and western Thousand Oaks. The groundwater basin has a sustainable groundwater pumping yield of approximately 3,000 to 4,000 acre-feet a year, which means that this, as well as additional future water supplies from this basin, can yield up to 10% of the city's water needs. Local groundwater levels have remained fairly stable since the 1970s due to the very limited groundwater utilization that's been taking place since that point in time. The city began development of the groundwater management plan last year, and it includes identification of sustainability thresholds, implements monitoring and reporting recommendations. The city worked with numerous stakeholders to develop the plan, including all local water purveyors, wholesalers, and large public entities such as Cano Valley Unified School District and CRPD. This continues the trend of major ongoing collaboration with our multiple regional partners, working towards sustainable basin management and water resources. Developing the groundwater management plan helps enable the city to be eligible for grant funding programs for water, as well as, including the upcoming Thousand Oaks Groundwater Utilization Program at the Los Robles Golf Course. It also helps us be better prepared for future state groundwater requirements which are coming. As part of the groundwater management plan, a monitoring plan has been developed that will, once put into place, will track groundwater levels and groundwater quality over time so that sustainability can be gauged. The wells were selected to include currently active monitoring wells to limit the number of new wells needed. What's depicted on the graphic here is the two additional monitoring wells, which we will have to install in order to help monitor and oversee the basin for groundwater levels. The GMP also proposes monitoring of groundwater for groundwater quality, for nitrates and TDS primarily. These same two groundwater wells that are needed for groundwater levels monitoring can also be used for groundwater quality. So we will only have a total of two additional well locations for sampling. We've also developed a data management system with this program to help track and manage historical and future groundwater levels. This is just a screenshot of it showing the various historical and current wells in town. It's a web-accessible tool and allows us to easily monitor the overall basin. Adoption of the Cano Valley Groundwater Basin Groundwater Management Plan will help provide the city with a framework to begin to move towards local groundwater utilization by means of planned and controlled monitoring, operation, and administration with a goal of long-term groundwater sustainability. That concludes staff's presentation. The recommendation is in the staff report, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hadari. Questions for Mr. Hadari?
Yeah, question from me, please.
Councilmember Angler?
Thank you. And Mr. Hadari, thanks for all that work on the plan. The groundwater right now is currently not being accessed or not being exploited, correct?
Correct. It had been utilized for approximately 30 years, from 1984 to 2014. But at that point in time, because of the content in the groundwater, the salts and the other constituents, minerals in the water, it was getting to the point where it couldn't even be used for irrigating the golf course, which is all it had been ever used for. But it appears there's a pretty large amount of groundwater in that basin.
And you said the quality had deteriorated to the point where it's no longer useful? Is that an anticipation on your part now? Or is the water itself useful now?
No, the golf course stopped using it in 2014 due to the inability of the water to even sustain, you know, the plant, you know, the content and the salts in the water was causing, you know, some discoloration of the grass and so forth. So they stopped using it then, and that, we've tested it quite a bit, and those same contents are still there. So although this is, that particular well has better groundwater quality than most other locations in town. But even with that, if we're gonna use it for potable purposes, we definitely need to put a treatment plant there to do a reverse osmosis, desalination essentially of that water.
So the water is there, but it's currently not potable and really can't be used? It's just too much salts, is that correct?
Correct.
In terms of sustainability, you mentioned, I think it's three or four hundred acre-feet. I forget the exact number you put in. Is that a sustainable number that you would think? Or is it something that you're looking at now?
Yeah, the studies show that the basin should be able to, you know, afford that much water, which is approximately 10% of the city's water, current citywide water usage. This particular well at the Los Robles Golf Course is not, does not constitute that entire number. The one at the golf course is approximately 1,000 acre-feet. So it's about a third of the overall yield of the basin, a third or a quarter.
And other than the desalination plant that we may have to use for making this into a useful item, is there more piping? Can we use existing piping? What kind of infrastructure are we looking at?
Yeah, fortunately, we have a local city water main not too far away, the corner of Moore Park Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So we would be able to, once treated, you know, bring the water over to that location, so it wouldn't be a long run. And the other matter to consider would be where do you dispose of the brine that's produced from the treatment process? Basically, the concentrated minerals and salt. And from this one particular well, it appears that our treatment plant will be able to accommodate that brine. But we're also working with Callejas on a more long-term solution, because they have a salinity management pipeline that, once extended, we would be allowed to, you know, join into.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, I was glad that Councilman Angler solicited the fact that this water is gonna be treated. Because when I came here, we were solely on well water, and it had a very unpleasant odor. And I, not knowing the treatment plans based on the staff report, I was glad to hear that it will be treated, because early residents here have got water softeners, not just to soften the water, but to eliminate the odor. But I think that this will be well handled, and we won't have that problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Jones, I have a question for you. When did you come here?
We came in the summer of 1964.
Ah.
And the incorporation was on the ballot.
Uh huh.
The election was gonna be September 21st. But there was a requirement then that you had to live in the district for 90 days,
uh huh.
or you could vote. So I couldn't vote. But I was glad that it passed, and also on the ballot was what to name the city. And the two choices were Thousand Oaks and Cano Valley.
Uh huh.
And I think they made the right decision.
Yeah. So you need to tell me, when you came here in 1964, the city was still on well water?
Yes, it was still on well water. And I don't know if you've ever heard of Mr. Wilford Rothschild. He was one of the early people here. He was a, he raised sheep and grazed them on the hills there, above where I first lived, on Valley High Street. And he was very active on the water board. And they formed what was called District 6. And some other, one of the gentlemen on the board was on my street, Valley High Street. And they worked with the state and were able, through this District 6, to, they worked, you know, through Callejas and the state, and they were then able, I think around 1965, as I recall, to get imported water. So the water quality improved substantially the next year after I arrived.
The reason I ask is I just wanted the public to understand that this is a very significant step for the city. And as you said, Councilmember Jones, when you got here, and for decades before that, we were completely dependent on well water. And now we're 100% dependent on water from the Metropolitan Water District. So here we are, going full circle, tapping into a long dormant well on the Los Robles Golf Course, and tapping into our aquifer that may be able to give us 10% of our water supply. I think that's very significant. Mr. Hadari was telling me before the meeting that the golf course well is pumping in a million gallons a day. That's quite amazing, that we have that kind of water right underneath of us. Because as you know, I mean, we face drought, we face regulations, restrictions. There's all kinds of problems with imported water. So this helps us to overcome some of those, to have our own source right here in Thousand Oaks. So with that...
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to mention that the hill water, I mean, the hill water, the hill canyote water treatment plant also has a certain capacity for a certain number of population in the city of Thousand Oaks that cannot exceed a certain number. And that is definitely something that we need to be able to keep in mind. And this is why this particular report comes in handy as well.
Uh huh. Thank you. All righty. Oh, and by the way, we are gonna build a water treatment plan at the golf course to treat the water, and it will be drinkable. Not just for irrigation, but we'll be drinking that water. It's gonna be crystal clear and great. So I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion, please.
I move to approve staff recommendation, yes, to adopt the resolution and to approve and adopt the groundwater basin management plan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have a motion on the floor. If we could vote, please?
Councilmember Angler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much. And thank you for that walk through the beginning of our city. Councilmember Jones?
You're welcome.
All right, on to a department report. And we're going to talk a little bit about our Community Funding Review Committee. And we are happy to have Ann Laffianza with us tonight, the chair of that committee. Good evening, Ann.
Hi, good evening.
There we are.
I can just see Councilmember Jones on my screen. I can't see the...
We see you, Ann.
We can hear you and see you.
We can hear you.
I just need to be able to see the screen with the slides.
I think we can put that up there. There we go. Do you see it?
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Good.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's really nice to see all of you, even though it's still through a screen. And good evening, Mayor Adam, all the councilmembers and staff. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to present the Community Funding Review Committee's recommendations for the city's 2020-2021 Social Services Relief Funding. First, the committee would like to thank city council for offering this much-needed funding and for allowing the committee to be part of the process. On August 25th, 2020, city council adopted a resolution to suspend CEEF and SFEF grants and reallocate $200,000 for performing arts center rent relief and social services emergency relief programs. City council approved $100,000 for 10,000 grants to 10 organizations. City council stated that they would consider funding additional organizations if more than 10 applied. We are here tonight to make a recommendation for the Social Services Emergency Relief Program, which provides funding to support local nonprofits providing COVID relief to Thousand Oaks residents. Before we make our recommendation, we would like to briefly highlight some of the amazing things these applicants have done. The YMCA, for example, is supporting students through essential distance learning, support to CVUSD school-aged children in grades K through 5. Each week, Safe Passages delivers over 12,284 pounds of free food, staples groceries to Thousand Oaks residents for emergency family COVID relief, and the need continues to grow. Manette continues to be the food pantry staple in Thousand Oaks, but the need has grown exponentially, and they have stepped up to the challenge supporting other nonprofits as well. The Cano Schools Foundation in Cano Closet provides distance learning tools for hundreds of CVUSD students, including tablets, headsets, and privacy screens. Avellante Comunidad Cano provides food support to more than 200 families each week who are struggling to make ends meet. A Westminster Community Clinic is providing healthy food, medical assistance, and mental health assistance to over 1,800 individuals each week. Since COVID, the need has grown 400% in some areas. Besides Meals on Wheels, Senior Concerns now provides and delivers free pantry items and COVID kits to seniors to protect this very vulnerable population. Because of the increase in foster care needs during COVID, James Storehouse opened a full-service food supply pantry to assist their clients. Art Truck provides essential arts supplies for distance learning for students, and they are also assisting local nonprofits by providing warehouse space and baby supplies. Women of Substance, Men of Honor has provided care for local foster youth for years. Now they must also provide them with PPE and cleaning supplies to stay safe. Besides a senior lunch drive-through, Cano's senior volunteer program have been making and distributing PPE, masks, aprons, and surgical hats to senior living facilities, homeless shelters, and locally essential workers and volunteers. In addition to daily food distribution and rental assistance, Harbor House is providing assistance with car repairs, which is crucial for families to stay employed and get kids to school. In some cases, it also provides a place to live. Raising Hope provides local current and former foster youth with life skills, mentoring, transportation, housing, and groceries. And during COVID-19 requests for their assistance have more than tripled. The best part of all this is in reading the applications. They are all supporting each other. Art Truck provides art supplies to Safe Passages and helps with storage. CSVP provides masks to all nonprofits. Harbor House is helping Avellante with rental assistance. And those are just some of the examples. The city received 13, excuse me, qualified applications. There were 60 possible points. CFRC members reviewed and evaluated the applications independently and objectively using predetermined scoring criteria based on the grant application. Application scores were provided to city staff for tabulation. The individual scores were combined and were very close. At the October 26 meeting, the CFRC unanimously voted to recommend to city council that all 13 applicants be funded $10,000 each for a total of $130,000. This concludes my presentation this evening. An assistant to the city manager, Melissa Hurtado, and associate analyst, Vincent Spiegel, and I are available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Laffianza. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem.
I don't have any questions, as much as I do have comments and would like to make a motion to approve this. But preceding the motion, I would like to stress how all of these organizations being recognized...
these organizations being recommended for approval tonight, each and every one of them has played a crucial role, not only before the pandemic, but even more so during this pandemic. These are all very, very reputable organizations, and what they have done and delivered during this very, very difficult time in our city just restores my faith in our community and our generosity and willingness by volunteers to help one another. You know, all hell may break loose across the country, but here in Thousand Oaks, we still care about our neighbors. And these recommendations make that point very clear. I want to thank Ann Laffianza and her group and this commission and staff. And nothing gives me more pleasure than to approve staff recommendation for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Angler?
Yes, thank you. I just want to echo Councilmember Claudia Villapena's comments. I think that, given the situation we've been in the last six, eight months, I actually am a little envious of Ms. Laffianza because of the window into the generosity of the community that our committee has been able to see. All of the groups that are mentioned, not only were doing things, as was said, before this episode hit, but they were able to really step up their activity with a, don't say stop, feeling that they were going to make a difference no matter what happened. And I wholeheartedly agree that these organizations deserve our support, and I agree with passing it forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Angler. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, just like Adam, I was glad to see Westminster come in at the top. I used to help with that. And all the fruit and vegetables we distributed was just amazing. I just, it was hard to realize just what the need was there. And people seemed so grateful to receive all that. So that was just one part of what we're approving tonight, but I'm sure all the others are equally as well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. And I just completely agree. It's so good that we're able to repurpose these funds and put them where they're needed most during COVID. These are wonderful social service agencies. I know at the last hearing, we asked for 10, and you came back with 13, so that's even better. It's great to be able to help people, and certainly at times like this. And as Mayor Protem said, and even before COVID, these agencies were doing a wonderful job. Thank you, Ms. Laffianza, for the work that you and your committee do. And at this point, then, I would like to ask for a motion, please.
We do have a motion, Mayor Protem.
Oh, we do, don't we?
Yes, I did make the motion.
You did.
And I have the motion, if I may say just one more thing.
Would you like to re-make it?
The, yeah, there is one organization, they all stand out, but the one that came in first with the highest number of, with the highest score, I think, was the Westminster Free Clinic. That is true. The Westminster Free Clinic has found a way to not only continue its extremely vital service of health care to the less privileged in our community, the ones who really need health care. But they also continued with their teen internship program, which mentors high school students through running a clinic and how, and get them interested in the medical field. I have first knowledge, firsthand knowledge of this, and it is simply amazing how its director, Lisa Safinelli, continues to inspire the youth and continues to provide for those in need in our community. So, and with that, I'd like to just reiterate the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have a motion on the floor. If we can have a vote, please.
Councilmember Angler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bill Delapena?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0.
All right. Thank you, councilmembers. And now we'll move on to another report, committee report. And we're going to talk a little bit about the, have a talk from the Council on Aging about the Senior Adult Master Plan and the Canejo Connections Directory. I believe we have Rosanna Guerra here this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Al Adam and councilmembers. I'm Rosanna Guerra, Chair for the City of Thousand Oaks Council on Aging. And my purpose for being before you today is to discuss the Council on Aging's proposal to transfer Canejo Connections to the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging, or VC AAA. Historically, the Council on Aging has maintained a citywide guide aimed at providing comprehensive resources to our senior community. Yearly updates were made by each commissioner, taking each section and manually calling each resource to provide an accurate update to the website's Canejo Connection site. In September 2019, I was sworn onto the board and took as my first task organizing the updates for Canejo Connections. I quickly found the online resource guide, although having many resources, not a coherent way to vet those resources. Rather than add more hours to the task of updating Canejo Connections, I proposed to the board a more effective solution: Have the VC AAA provide this service. The VC AAA already provides a county-wide, online, five-day-per-week call center with experienced representatives that can effectively answer our seniors' needs by either an interactive website, phone, or by text. The most appealing aspect of this proposal is that not only are the calls handled by experienced representatives, addressing the reason for the call, but also uncovering any additional needs a senior may not know exist. This dynamic conversation will hopefully provide the basis of an ongoing relationship between our Thousand Oaks senior population and VC AAA. Follow-up is offered to our callers to check in and see if their needs were met, along with asking if any additional resources are needed. The VC AAA has a relationship with Alliance for Information and Referral Systems, or AIRS. This organization is a national nonprofit that provides certification for information and referral systems, and provides guidelines on how a referral system should operate and maintain a database. For additional resources, 211 Ventura County is available 24/7 to provide access to nonprofits for all ages, as well as access to up-to-the-minute disaster resources. With approval by the City Council, our plan is to remove Canejo Connections and instead provide access to the VC AAA and 211 websites and phone numbers from our webpage, and begin immediate outreach to our senior population through social media, print media, and our agency partners. Education on the easy access to VC AAA will be an ongoing goal for the council. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to your approval of this proposal. I would like to now introduce Stephanie Belding.
Thank you, Rosanna. Good evening, Mayor Adam, City Council, and staff. My name is Stephanie Belding, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Council on Aging. Per our resolution and original charge from the City Council, COA, Council on Aging, participates in outreach to identify the needs and concerns of our older adults and to actively ensure that our senior population has the knowledge of local programs and services available to them to meet these needs. The previous SAMP survey was distributed more than 13 years ago, and since that time, the older adult population continues to be the fastest-growing demographic in our city. Substantial changes and recent dramatic events in our community have compelled us to renew a means to address senior concerns. The fires, pandemic, and subsequent quarantining, extreme weather pattern changes, and safety issues of late can all affect our senior population significantly. In order to compare data, see progress, and inform seniors, outreach began in January of 2020 at the Global Adult Community Center, senior living communities, and other venues where older adults could share ideas about programs and services that were used, needed, or could be improved upon. The topics most mentioned by participants were transportation, health and nutrition, housing, including concerns for homeless seniors, and caregiving. So we were sure to address these topics with the emphasis warranted by their input. We have designed the survey not only to update the data previously collected 13 years ago, but to address the changing needs of our Thousand Oaks seniors. The updated survey was designed with the goal of serving not only as a tool for data collection, but, as you may have noticed in looking it over, now will serve as an effective and powerful means to disseminate information. Many of the topics included now contain essential information regarding food programs, emergency services, recreational activities, and health and fitness services built directly into the survey questions themselves. And respondents can print out a copy of the survey and retain access to these vital services and contact information for later use. In order for the City of Thousand Oaks to continue to be a healthy, friendly community for all ages, increased awareness and improvement of community programs and services offering educational opportunities, optimal health, housing, transportation, and recreational activities will be needed to safeguard quality of life for our senior adult residents. In summary, the COA survey, under the guidance of the City Council and following safe county guidelines, will go a long way toward keeping up with our charge to seek input from and share important information with our Thousand Oaks older population. Thank you for your time and consideration, and now we're ready for any questions you might have.
Well, thank you very much. Questions for Ms. Guerra or Ms. Belding? Alrighty, hearing none. I will say that I think it's a great idea to have a fresh survey, so we can see what's on our seniors' minds here in 2020. And it's a very, I looked it over, it's a very comprehensive survey. I hope people take the time to fill it out because it'll set the course for the, our Council on Aging and our Senior Adult Master Plan for some years to come. Thank you both for your work on this committee. And with that, I would like to ask for a motion, please.
I'll move the recommended action.
All right, Councilmember Jones, we have a motion on the floor. Vote, please.
Councilmember Angler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bill Delapena?
My answer is yes, and thank you to the commission for your new ideas. I really appreciate it.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
That motion carries 4-0.
All right, very good, very good. Now, that pretty much takes care of our business for this evening. Let us go to our city manager for any follow-up items you may have. Mr. Powers?
Thanks so much, Mayor Adam. We, our next regular city council meeting is actually our annual reorg meeting, which is slated for the 8th of December. It will be a virtual reorg this year, but a reorg nonetheless, and vote certification and all those things. Earlier that day, we will have the mayor's annual State of the City address again being delivered virtually this year. It is free to register, as you heard from the chamber last week. If you go to the chamber's website, canehochamber.org, you can sign up. And we encourage everyone to go out and do that. Following that meeting, our last business meeting of the calendar year will be on the 15th of December. And that's it for my reports this evening, although I'd be remiss in not acknowledging it as my daughter's third birthday tonight. And I promised her, when she occasionally watches the stream, that I would let her know that. So happy birthday, sunny girl.
How nice. Third-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Jones?
I would like to make a couple of compliments. I'd like to compliment our city manager's daughter on her third birthday. And I'd also like to compliment our excellent mayor on his reelection.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. It's a little past my third birthday, though, but, Drew, I think that's just amazing. Three years already. How about that? Goes by quick. My daughters are 22 now, and they were three once, so enjoy it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Yes, I echo Mr. Jones's congratulations as well to you and to Mr. Powers's daughter. And given that we still have about more than 3,000 votes to count in Ventura County, Mr. Powers, do we anticipate the elections to be certified in time for the reorganization?
I can, she's already acknowledging yes, so I don't have to go to her. But in conversations with the county, our city clerk, Cindy Rodriguez, is in regular dialogue with them, and we do anticipate certification to occur. Next update is scheduled for Thursday afternoon.
Thank you.
All right, very good. And Ms. Newton, closed session.
Yes, thank you. We do have one closed session matter tonight pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. It is conference with real property negotiators for the first property, 1791 Los Feliz Drive. Negotiating on behalf of the city will be Mike Tahidian, and negotiating on behalf of the property owner will be Gilbert Hakim and Juan Carlos Rodriguez. In addition, we have owners at 1745 and 1775 Los Feliz Drive. Under negotiation will be the price in terms of purchase. And it is unlikely I'll have anything to report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Newton. So I will adjourn this meeting to our annual reorganization meeting on December 8. And in the meantime, have a good evening and stay safe and stay healthy out there. Thank you.